Welcome to our study session this fine Thursday morning. Ruth, would you do a roll call please?
Yes, sir. Addison, Gray.
Here.
Brown, Johnston.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Flatts.
Thank you. Our first presentation today will be from the Idaho Housing Authority, the Housing Authority of Pocatello. Representatives from the Housing Authority of Pocatello will discuss the authority's goals and projects, as well as the council's policies and expectations.
Great.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. I've brought with me today my right hand, Michelle Paletti, who keeps the agency running in my absence, and I truly appreciate her. I just have prepared a brief presentation for you to share again the information of what the Housing Authority does, and I'm going to conclude it by talking a little bit about how I think that maybe we could be better partners with the city, and vice versa. So I'll start by talking about properties and programs of the Housing Authority. This is kind of a refresher. You guys hear from me every year, so you probably have it all memorized by now. Then we'll talk about strategic focus to impact poverty through education. This is a focus that the Housing Authority's taken on very passionately for the last two years now, and let you know what we plan for next year, because next year is the Housing Authority's 50th anniversary in the community. And then we'll talk some more like I shared on expanded city and agency collaboration. So first, I want to just remind you about our programs and where we are at with our programs. We have two elderly-disabled properties that serve the community. Both of these properties have 72 units. Christianson Courts is a public housing property, and Portnough Towers is what is called by HUD Section 8 New Construction. These properties, the residents pay about 30% of their income towards rent and utilities, so clearly they must be income-eligible in order to live in these properties, and they receive the rest of the funding from HUD, which, as you all know, with federal funding has regularly been decreasing. And so we have worked to be really creative to make sure that we're ensuring that these properties are sustainable for the long term, looking at some other options that HUD is providing for both of these programs. We have two, what is called multi-family Section 236 properties at McKinley Manor and Maple West. They're on each of those streets respectively. These have one, two, and three-bedroom units. We have a lot of families at these properties, a lot of individuals who are going to college and young families there, so they're working towards their self-sufficiency and generally move on into the community with degrees. We see dentistry, pharmacology, business. So we have a lot of young families there. They're really great environments. We have two open-market properties. Even though they're open-market, they meet the Housing Authority's mission in order to provide rental properties to families who may not qualify for our programs but may have a difficult time renting out on what we call the open market. So they're kind of that threshold of rent that's a little bit lower than what open-market rents would be. These have one, two, and three-bedroom units. I shared with you a couple of years ago that we had taken on management for Reflections 5 properties. They were some properties that had fallen into ill-repair. There are five properties in Pocatello, total of 55 units. They are also called Section 8 New Construction, so families must be income-eligible to reside in these properties. They are two, three, and a few four-bedroom units. These are the reason why my hair is now almost gray. They have kind of been the thorn in our side. We've really worked hard to get these cleaned up. We're proud of the work that we've done, but we have a long way to go with these properties. We've had the OIG come and visit, the Inspector General to review the properties. Prior to us taking them over, some of the things that had been reported that had been going on, they were concerned about fraud activity. We have been working with HUD to try and get these completely cleaned up, as well as try to get them cleaned up for the residents. We feel that we've been really successful for the most part. We still have some, you know, maybe a few drug issues at one of the properties that we're working to resolve and have been working with our city police department in order to have some people removed that probably shouldn't be living there and receiving federal assistance. We also have our biggest program. It's kind of our dinosaur. We have the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We currently have capability in our contract with HUD to assist up to 697 households out in the open market. I pulled my numbers yesterday and can tell you that we aren't funded to assist that many. The contract says that we can lease up to that, but we aren't receiving the money to lease up to that. Currently, we only have funding for 571 vouchers that are currently leased, and I'm not sure if we're going to be able to continue leasing up even through the rest of the year. We've only pulled from our waiting list twice this year. We've pulled 40 individuals, and all of those 40 individuals have come from our homeless preference. That gives you an indication of the homeless issue that really is in Pocatello. We haven't even gotten to our other preferences, being elderly, disabled, and families. They've all been homeless individuals that we have worked to house through the voucher program. This is the program that is what we call out on the open market that funds our recipients to go find a property from a landlord on the open market. And just so that you can see, last year, our fiscal year ending June 30th, we paid just over $3 million to landlords in the city of Pocatello. I feel like that is a substantial financial commitment that the Housing Authority is pouring back into the economy here in Pocatello. Our waiting list has 817 households on that waiting list. I've been at the agency for eight years. That is more than we've had in the entire eight years that I've been here. We've historically told people that the wait is about three years. Honestly, that has to be bumped now to at least a four-year wait. I quite frankly wouldn't be surprised to say that that's also a five-year wait, because the way we've been unable to pull from our waiting list. On our current program, we do have three households that hold homeownership vouchers. So what that means is that they have been on our program, they have participated in our standing, they have worked with, probably Neighbor Works in most cases, to work on cleaning up their credit, and then they've been able to get a loan through a financial institution based on their credit. They still get assistance like they would on our voucher program for up to 15 years, and then they're weaned off of the program and are homeowners. We love the homeownership program. What we find is that participants really only stay on the program for maybe four or five years as they're working towards self-sufficiency, and then they're able to maintain that mortgage on their own without assistance. The challenge is that not everyone on our program, not all 571 households, are ready for homeownership. We all know that not everyone is ready for homeownership. It may be credit issues, it may just be that they don't want to fix the water heater when it breaks. But we're really excited when we have households that step forward and want to take advantage of that program. Housing Authority can have up to 10 homeownership voucher holders at a time. So that's, we do have opportunity for more, and we do market that and let our program participants be aware of that. We have 33 VASH vouchers which are serving homeless veterans in our area, and that, as you recall, has been a really, really big push for the Housing Authority in conjunction with the mayor's office over the last few years. We started out with 13 VASH vouchers and were able to increase our amount. HUD is issuing a last increment of new VASH vouchers. The Housing Authority has elected not to apply for those. Idaho Housing over in Idaho Falls is applying for 10, and when they do that, we will get some of our vouchers back, because we're required to port out to areas that may not have the program serving their area. Since Idaho Falls has not had that, we've also been offering our vouchers there. So if they get vouchers, then we feel confident that 33, although may not cover our need completely, we do believe that it is the maximum that our VA can handle in caseload, and we don't want to overburden those of you who know Cy Williams. He's already at maximum capacity, and we're afraid that individuals would miss out on the case management that they need on that VASH program. So that's why we've elected not to apply for more of those vouchers this year. We also have a landlord rehab loan program in partnership with Neighbor Works. We love this program. Landlords are able to apply and have worked in on properties. We'll have new water heaters put in, new heating systems, sometimes new roofs. It can be exterior, basically to make it look better with your siding, you know, new windows which will help with insulation. So the Neighbor Works, they pre-qualify landlords, and then they bring a loan to the board of the Housing Authority, who then makes a determination if they're going to approve that loan. I wanted to share with you some things about our program integrity. There are multiple ways that the Housing Authority is scored by HUD. The first is the Section 8 Management Program, and that is that big program I talked about where we have 697 vouchers. We get scored on that every year. We have consistently been a high performer in that. The next one is FAS. It's Public Housing Authority subsystem. It's a scoring system for our public housing. Again, we are consistently high performers there. We have an audit every year. We have clean audits and no findings, and every year, our Section 8 New Construction property, Portnough Towers, has what is called a management and occupancy review, and again, that is consistently a high performer. We are very proud of all of those scores. Now I'm going to share with you a little bit about the passion of myself, most of my staff, and the Housing Authority Board, and that is really working beyond the sticks and bricks of housing to have an impact in community. We've become actively engaged in realizing that we have opportunity to impact poverty, specifically the families that we serve, through education. This initially started with our Book for Every Child initiative, where we focus on getting books into the homes of the children on our program. It started with the, every person that came in, every household that came in, a child that was listed on that application, or was just in with a parent, went home with a book. The child doesn't have to be there. The parents take the books home if the child is not there. We send books home. That's our goal. It's since stretched to a partnership with United Way and the Pocatello School District, specifically Wilcox Elementary, where this year with a grant from the United Way, they were able to obtain money in order to do some summer school for children going into kindergarten. We were excited that many of the children in the Wilcox School area that are on our program were able to attend the summer school. There were about 25 children, and for three weeks, they started with school readiness. So our children who maybe had not had opportunity to get school readiness before had three weeks before school started, so we're really excited about that. We know that the only way to change intergenerational poverty is through education. We see grandma on our program, we see mom on the program, and we certainly do not want, when their child graduates from high school, if that's what they're able to do, for their ultimate goal to be to get a Housing Choice voucher. That's not a good goal. We want them to go on, and we know that the first way to do that is through education, and that starts with books. About 60% of children living in poverty have no books in the home, because when you think about it, when parents get their taxes back, or it's Christmas time, there's a lot of pressure to buy the PS4 or the newest games and not books. So we recognize that reading is the start to our education goals, and we are passionate about that. We have received, the bottom right is a really poor picture, that was regional recognition. We received the top award in the region, which is Alaska, Oregon, and Idaho, and Washington for this program, and then we received an Award of Merit in July for this program, and we are one of only 33 awards in the entire country that will be issued in two weeks because of this program and its innovation. So we're excited. It's being modeled across the country, and I've spoken on it across the country. So we're excited for the partnership and the impact that we believe it can have. Another dark picture, it looked a lot better on my computer. So next year is 50 years. Housing Authority has been serving the community for 50 years, and we find that to be monumental. We're going to spend a whole year celebrating that fact. We've had a board, a staff retreat. We went over to Goodies and had lunch, and we spent the afternoon talking about what next year would look like. Each month of the entire year, we have selected an activity that we will be doing either for our residents or for the community in order to share in the good work that the Housing Authority's been doing in the community. We hope to be able to market these so that we are able to show that the Housing Authority is a significant part of this community. Also in that, I will be approaching my board next week with hopefully a new name. We plan to rebrand. Studies show across the country that anything that says Housing Authority says government, bureaucratic, and not good. Lots of paperwork. We want it to be a lot more positive than that. We want it to be more representative of what we do in the community. So we're going to be working to change our name and rebrand. The staff has come up with a name that they're hoping that the board will approve, and that name, currently, you get a sneak peek right here, is Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships, because we believe that sums up what we do. As a housing alliance, we have many programs, not just public housing, under one umbrella, and we are a strong community partner in any way possible. So we will be taking that to our board next week for approval, and then be working with HUD through their bureaucratic process to change the name. Finally, how can we better partner? It comes down to three things that the Housing Authority wants moving forward: advocacy, land acquisition, and better work with city departments. For advocacy, there are a couple of you that are sitting up there that I've signed up for NARO memberships, because you've indicated that you were interested in knowing what was going on, not just in Pocatello, but nationally in regards to housing, because you recognize that this plays back to local. So there is a NARO advocacy toolkit where you can go in and you can send letters, and I tell you, it means a lot more when someone like Senator Crapo sees your name on a letter as opposed to my name on a letter, because it's clear that it's my job. For you, you're an elected official, and it means that you're concerned about your community. So your name on a letter carries a lot more weight than my name. You can also do individual advocacy at the state and federal level. There are other states, many other states, where there is funding for housing in the state. Idaho's not one of them, and I recognize that we regularly don't want to talk about other funding, other programs, but I do believe that with some of the housing problems that we have in the entire state, that it's time that the state of Idaho take a look at their responsibility in providing some funding towards housing programs. So you can advocate on behalf of the Housing Authority at the state and federal level. We love having Jim Johnston as our liaison. He's very engaged and very active, and we also recognize that he has an audience with our elected officials in DC a few times, you know, each year, and so every time that he's going to be seeing someone, I'm on the phone with him and saying, "Don't forget to mention the Housing Authority." And so I believe that he carries that torch well, and that's the same thing I would ask all of you: don't forget to mention the Housing Authority. If you don't speak up for us, then it leaves me to speak up for us, and that's my job. Like I said, it doesn't carry as much weight, and so we're dependent on making sure that our Housing Authority is sustainable. Land acquisition. Housing Authority wants to develop. We don't know if that looks like developing new properties or taking over properties that are older. Now, I will keep in mind that I'm a little bit skimpy on budget. Jim and I, again, have this talk regularly, and I kind of like, I'm old-school. I like the blue light special. And so when I'm looking at things, I'm looking for the blue light special and then how I can build on that, because our resources are a finite amount, and I want to make sure that we're using them in the best way possible when we're looking at developing. But we do have a need in Pocatello for increased affordable housing. That waiting list tells you that, and so we want to meet that need through either development or buying current properties that are for sale. So if you're aware of land, let us know. Again, though, I'm interested in the blue light special. I'm not interested in the land that's at the gold price with the gas tanks underneath that I'm going to have to do the environmental reviews in order to even get it through HUD for appropriate housing. But do keep us in line. We're interested in that. The next thing is city departments. I feel like we have a really strong working relationship with our city council and with the mayor's office, and I thank you for that. Some city departments, we do struggle with our relationship. I will just share, and this isn't a gritching session, but I will just share, you know, we do have one of the storage containers that are not allowed in the city of Pocatello, and we are working to get rid of it. We've been notified that we will be inspected for that. It's behind our shop, just over here, but I question, why does the city have one? If I can't have one, why does the city have one? So, you know, I would just like us to look at areas that we can be better partners. We continually, each year, we get notifications of sidewalks or of trees, and I understand that. I understand that we need to keep them up and running, yet I walk from past my sidewalk to the next section of sidewalk, and it's horrible. So we want to be a good partner, but I think that sometimes rather than threatening the Housing Authority with a fine, it would be better to say, "What can we do? We're glad to be a partner and take care of those things," but I tell you, sometimes getting those letters when I'm like, "Really? I'm your partner, and I would like to be treated as your partner by all of the city departments."
You're not alone on that feeling, so.
Thank you. It has just been, you know, and I understand. I understand city code. I understand that I cannot have a train car as a storage unit. We are getting rid of it. But again, I would ask then, why does the city have one? So I just request better partnerships and maybe letting the city departments know that we are your partner. You guys appoint my board, and so I would like us to be treated as a fair partner instead of punitively someone who maybe could get fine money from, because we really strive to represent the city well and to always speak highly of the city, and we would like the same thing in return. So I would be loved, I would love to answer any questions you have about our work. As you can tell, I'm passionate about our work. I love our work, and I'm committed to this work.
Sunny, Portnough Towers and Christianson Courts are pretty old facilities. They've been around a long time. Is there a lifespan for a building like that, or will they go forever?
There is a lifespan. I love that question. Interestingly enough, Portnough Towers has a contract that expires next August. When that property was built, this was back in the heyday when Congress thought HUD should have all the money they wanted. We recognize that they shouldn't now. We support that. But the rents that we are allowed to get from HUD are much higher right now than they're going to be next August. We're concerned about being able to maintain that property. If you've been in it, you know that there's a lot to maintain in it. So we have been the last four years really working to increase the life of that property on every level. We've looked at elevators, we've looked at windows, we've looked even things cosmetic, carpet, and paint, because we recognize that some of that money is going to be gone. I don't know. We've signed a contract with HUD. We have agreed to do two more years under that contract while we look as a board at what we want to do with that property. I would hate to say that it should be torn down, but there is a life. Christianson Courts currently, you know, they've got that beautiful courtyard with the five stories of sidewalks out there. The sidewalks have started crumbling. So this year, we've spent $110,000 to re-strengthen those sidewalks. How long will that last? 15 years would be my speculation? And we're really trying to look long-term, not for how long will I be in this chair, but the sustainability of the property. That's why we're looking at some public housing options. There is some opportunities that HUD is presenting. They want large investment, though. They want us to borrow in order to take up this opportunity against a property that we own nothing on, and they want $35,000 per unit as an investment. The property is in really good shape. I would love to have you guys come along. In fact, that's one of our activities that we're planning for our year of celebration. I think it's in August. We're hoping to do a bus tour for city council, elected officials, and commissioners to go and look at our properties, so we can show you, so you can be aware of the strengths and the concerns. I do have concerns about life of those properties.
Thank you. Sunny, would you brag for a minute and tell the audience what's happening in your life relative to the national housing people?
Sure. Many of you on the board are aware of this. I don't hate talking about myself specifically, but I am actually campaigning as well. It's election season on the national level for what we call our professional organization, the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. It is an organization comprised of 3,500 housing authorities, about 18,000 members, and I have been campaigning for over a year now for the position of National Senior Vice President of that organization. My campaign trail ended October 2nd. This year alone, I went to 17 conferences that I was invited to come and campaign and speak at, both on behalf of my platform and present sessions. So I can tell you, every time I was asked to present, I talked about housing and education, because that is my passion. So we have amassed an amazing campaign team that's New Jersey, Massachusetts, Maryland, Minnesota, Nebraska, California, Texas, Ohio, Oklahoma, all over, except for one little pocket where my opponent is from, and that is called the Southeastern Regional Council of NARO. It's the largest region in the country. So when I found out that I had someone running for that campaign one year ago, I went back to my board, who is fully supportive of this endeavor, and I said, "I have an opponent from the largest region in the country, and because of their size, he'll probably mop the floor with me. Do you want me to withdraw from the race?" And my board said, "No. We believe that there is, even this campaign alone is a great deal of professional development, what you'll bring back to the Housing Authority and to the community. We believe that it is worth that cost and time." I've been able to do it, because I have a fabulous team who have kept things running when I've been gone. Spent a lot of nights sitting up late in hotel rooms, still doing my work, so hopefully people didn't necessarily realize I wasn't always at my desk. It has been an amazing experience, probably one of the best experiences of my life. I've learned so much. It's currently, the election is open, October 2nd through October 24th. Like I said, three of you sitting up there are NARO members. I would ask you to vote. If you did not get your ballot, let me know. You should have gotten it October 2nd. I would plead with you to cast your ballot in favor of me. I do believe that we've got a fabulous national campaign. I do believe that I have learned the concerns of housing authorities across the country. Some are very common across the country, some are very unique to states and cities, and I obviously passionately believe that I'm the person that can help each one of those housing authorities, so it's been incredible.
One other question, Sunny. I think there are probably people in this audience that do not understand the relationship between the city and the Housing Authority, HUD, and everybody else. Could you briefly try and explain that to this very smart group?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. I would love to. So the Housing Authority is, there's enabling legislation that Idaho did, that Congress actually enacted and allowed for housing authorities to create, to be created by cities or counties. So Pocatello was one of the few in Idaho who, back in 1968, kind of struck "Why the iron was hot" and took this opportunity. A lot of states have 40, 50 housing authorities. Idaho has nine, only nine. Pocatello was brilliant in 1968 by deciding that as the city, they wanted a housing authority. Now, housing authorities in most cases are independent bodies that the city, their only role is to appoint the board of commissioners. So each time I have a board member who has rotated off or resigned, the city accepts applications and selects a new board member, who is the Housing Authority's governing body. That board of commissioners hires me and dictates our strategic plan and the vision for the Housing Authority. Now, our funding comes from HUD, so we answer to HUD. We jump through a lot of hoops for HUD. It's not all from HUD. A lot of it is private dollars also, because we have been able to create revenue streams that are private by properties that we own outright that are not tied to HUD. So we get our funding through federal programs, we funnel it into the community, and then our responsibility to the city is as a partner and that they appoint my board whom I answer to.
Now, the properties that are owned, do they pay taxes?
They do pay taxes. They pay pilot. So they pay payment in lieu of taxes. So there is a calculation that is done that is to determine what our renting capacity was, revenue made, what our utility costs were, a couple of other costs are played into it, and then we pay pilot taxes. So, you know, for, so for Christianson Courts, we pay about $7,000 a year. For Portnough Towers, we pay about $10,000 a year, and on down through our other properties. So we do pay taxes. All of our properties, the Housing Authority owns free and clear, although Christianson Courts has a deed of trust saying that HUD owns it before the Housing Authority. That's one of the things that HUD is looking at, is walking away from the deed of trust and giving ownership to housing authorities, and we are exploring what that would look like. So we do pay taxes. We are very actively involved in the community in that regard.
One other.
I love it, sure.
What can we as a city do to improve housing? We still have homeless people. What can we do to improve the situation of housing in Pocatello for everyone?
So I have two answers for that. The first one is in regards to the homeless population. We need more housing, and we need to figure out a way if that's getting the state involved for funding some of it. I know that Senator Nye is very interested in pursuing some sort of funding stream for housing. I would be interested in that. There are some areas that have done a tax on hotel rooms in order to put it into a housing trust fund, so that that way it can go towards housing. Most of the times when it's, you know, hotels don't necessarily like that, but it's tourists that are. that are coming into our community, and a dollar a night doesn't really add that much more to a hotel bill. And a housing trust fund is a great way to go to fund future affordable housing. I can just tell you, I worked the front desk on Tuesday, which is, I started my career as a receptionist. I didn't think that it would be that far from my capabilities, but I forgot how busy a front desk is, especially after a holiday. And I can tell you, my entire morning was spent talking to homeless people who came in my office. It snowed Sunday. And suddenly, it made them realize, it was cold. It's going to be a cold winter. And our programs have no emergency funding. And so I look at us as kind of more long-term. We have nothing that I can offer someone who slept in their car last night. So my hands are tied. I can give them hope for maybe, maybe in six months, maybe in three years, maybe in five years. So we have a dire need for affordable housing. The other part of that, I believe, is that we have some really poor quality housing in Pocatello. As the city's consolidated plan shows, we have the oldest rental stock in the state. So I would almost challenge that when those code enforcers are coming out and giving me notice, that maybe they should look a little bit deeper at some of the properties that some of my residents are wanting to live in, that I won't let them live in because they are so substandard. So that's a two-part answer to your question. I think that I would love for the city to look at, you know, partner with us, looking at something for state funding, partner with us, looking for something on, you know, maybe that hotel cost that could go into the housing trust fund. I'm always concerned when those types of things are set up, because when people hear, "Oh, well, there's going to be this fund, and it's housing trust, and we'll allow it to..." I want to make sure that if a city takes on that type of venture, that they're thinking of, how does it really benefit those most in need? And I would request that they require that the housing authority be at the table in that discussion.
Are you done down there?
Temporarily.
He loves the housing authority, so.
Well, I can understand that. I miss Bobby, and he's not on the board any longer.
She's not.
That's really, that problem here, Sunny, is you used two terms that are just kind of painful. One was pilot, and another is code enforcement. So, but we won't hold that against you. Your name change. You got a couple of those right. People don't trust government and the bureaucracy and that. But how are you going to pronounce that H-A-C-P? Is that going to be H-A-P?
No. So we have actually gone by the acronym H-A-C-P for seven years. That was one of the first things I did when I got here, and we just go H-A-C-P. And so that will fit with the name change because we really worked, because we're Housing Authority, City of Pocatello, H-A-C-P. And Michelle came up with the, like...
You came up with the "P"?
What could work? Yes. So we just, I believe in this time, it's really critical to rebrand because our residents are already facing so much stigma.
Right. Well, you've got a great employee with Michelle there.
You bet I do.
I get the chance to work with her on another board, so. You mentioned that your tenants are paying 30% of their income or up to?
In Christianson Courts and Portnough Towers.
Is that dictated by HUD, or is that a policy?
That's dictated by HUD.
Okay.
Yeah. On the voucher program, it's 30 to 40%. At Maple and McKinley, because it's a different program, they pay full rent, but we're required by contract to keep it at a low rent.
Right.
So yes, those rent rates are all set by HUD.
And then with your programs, what's the delinquency rate?
Very minimal.
Are they?
Yeah. The programs where we're a landlord, we have 322 properties in Pocatello. Where we're a landlord, we have very, very little delinquency. Now, those who are on our Section 8 program, where we struggle sometimes is with our landlords who don't do background checks and don't do landlord reference checks. Because I will find out from a landlord that they've got a tenant that's into them for, you know, $1,500, and say, "Did you call this previous landlord?" And, "Well, no, they have a voucher." So I thought it was... No, we tell our landlords, "You have to do reference checks. You have to do reference checks." And then we also get into a situation where sometimes landlords like getting what we call that half-check, say it covers half the rent. So they will let somebody get really, really delinquent because they don't want to lose that half-check. And if I were a landlord on the open market, and I am, I wouldn't let it get out of control like that. So we try to have, we do have a landlord workshop once a year where we invite all of our landlords to come in, where we can answer questions, where we can talk to them about new things going on in the program. And one of the things that we've found at that workshop is afterwards, sometimes we'll have a landlord that's having an issue with a tenant, and they will be able to get specific time with the caseworker. Because we like to try to help you with that issue.
There you go, doing another one of those relationship things, Section 8, for those of you in the military. Anyway, and Section 8 housing is that, that are privately owned, and they're part of your program, or they've been vetted into your program, and that half-check goes directly to the landlord from housing authority?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One of the things that I'll add about that check going directly to the landlord, previously, you know, sometimes we do have households that are zero income, and they also get a utility reimbursement. And something that we just initiated this last month was that that utility reimbursement no longer goes to the household, it goes to Idaho Power Direct.
Good job.
So we just started that in September.
Thank you, Sunny.
Any other questions for Sunny? Thank you, Sunny.
Thank you.
Presentation. Appreciate you and all that you do. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, as United Senior Project update. Representatives from the United Senior Project will be present to update the council on their plans to construct a new complex for senior citizens and seek council's support for the project.
Thank you for this opportunity to share with you the United Senior vision of enhancing the senior experience with our mission of visualizing, designing, funding, developing, and operating a sustainable senior complex, which will enhance physical, social, and nutritional health, lifelong learning, and recreational opportunities for the well-being of our senior community.
Before you move on, for our audience that's watching on TV, would you please introduce the three of you at the table?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm Sharon Manning. I am the chairman of the United Senior Project.
I'm Mary Spinner. I'm president of New Knowledge Adventures.
I'm Angela Lucky, and I represent the band.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
Our group was formed in August, September of 2016. As we began to work together towards this vision, we realized that we had a huge project before us that not just one group could accomplish. Thus developed our shared governance. United Senior Project would be the umbrella group that would take on the mission of the facility, but not be involved in the governance of the groups involved, while all the supporting groups would retain leadership over their organization and also be represented and support the United Senior Building. Our attorney pro bono prepared the articles of incorporation to create a nonprofit. With our governance committee, they are also developing bylaws and paperwork to secure the 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status with the IRS. We thought that we were very innovative in our form of governance, never seen in the state of Idaho until we toured other facilities. In Haley, the Senior Connections coordinates their facility in addition to providing home health care, health care in the facility, and classes for dementia clients in addition to a strong funding group for their sustainability. In Twin Falls, the facility also not only serves the senior center, but is also a distribution site for the Idaho Food Bank. In Lewiston, the Parks and Recreation Department supervised their community center, which encompasses all age groups, with a bus scheduled specifically to bring people to that facility. Brandon told us there that the friends for this group was necessary to help sustain their services. In Moscow, we found the 1912 Center. It's the old high school that was built in 1912, which now serves the community under the umbrella of the Heart of the Arts, which provides spaces for a variety of groups and activities. As Steve Baer said while he was conducting the tour, "This facility is a form of shared governance that is best for all those involved." Please note, though, cities and counties all play an important role in sustaining each of these facilities that we mentioned. However, we still have found that our United Senior Project does have a very unique offering that is not available in the above-mentioned communities, which can provide a complimentary and enriching experience for the seniors in the Pocatello Chubik and surrounding area. Mary Spinner and Angela Lucky will address these opportunities.
Well, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today about New Knowledge Adventures. New Knowledge Adventures, 20 years ago, 1997, there was a handful of people that had a dream and a vision to provide lifelong learning opportunities for the senior community in Pocatello. So in conjunction with Idaho State University and the Rhodes Scholar Program, which is an international, national lifelong learning program, they created New Knowledge Adventures here in Pocatello. And New Knowledge Adventures, like I said, is a lifelong learning program. It's open to anybody over the age of 50. That small group of people in 1997 has now grown to a membership this fall of 568 members in our New Knowledge Adventures program. New Knowledge Adventures hits a lot of the components that Sharon talked about. Three of the areas that are recognized as really important for a healthy senior population are continued educational and intellectual activities, social interaction, and physical activity. So within NKA, we have 11 categories of classes that we offer, and within that, we offer over 100 classes a semester right now that hit upon all of these. It's a very affordable program. Right now, the dues for a semester are $35 a semester. For the majority of the classes, that's what it costs. There are a few classes that have additional fees if there are supplies or other activities that coordinate with it. AARP, a few years ago, did an article about our NKA program here in Pocatello. And from that article, which went out to AARP all over the country, we have had people move to Pocatello in order to join NKA. So it is a bonus to the community as well. And also from that, we have had two spinoffs. There is a Friends for Learning program in Idaho Falls, which coordinates with Idaho State University and under the same guidelines. And also, several years ago, an NKA program was formed in Boise and Meridian. So we feel like it does provide a very valuable service to our seniors, and we not only have people just from Pocatello, now it's expanded. So it's a very valuable program.
I represent the Snake River New Horizons Band, and it was begun eight years ago by John Miners, who had, he had gone to the Jazz Festival in Sun Valley and decided he wanted to learn how to play the saxophone. And so he came back trying to figure out how to start these lessons, and he founded this organization through NKA and got some people who were interested in participating in starting a band. And the band is made up of seniors, mostly 50 and over. We do have some younger members. Started from 10 people, and now we have 40 members. And we have beginners, people who have never had a music lesson in their lives, beginning to learn an instrument that is relative to the band. We recently had our concert, I think it's the eighth year, seventh year, sixth year, something like that, with the Idaho State University Symphonic Band. It's on YouTube under the Stevens Performing Arts Center, if you're interested in checking out our progress. In fact, some of the previous concerts are on there as well. This program offers many opportunities for seniors. Seniors who maybe, through their busy youth, never had time to take up the instrument that they played maybe in elementary, in middle school, or high school, they can either dust off their old instruments and start playing again, or learn something. Maybe their kid took off and left the drum set there, and so it's sitting there just dusty. They can then begin. We did have one woman who dusted that off and came in and started learning the trap set. And so it's, and we have a lot of fun. We play at different venues, the Ridgwin and other seniors' residences around this town. We've also played at Mulatt at their, I think we've played three years now, at their Fourth of July celebration. We've gone to Grace. We've participated in their pep band activities, as well as enhancing their band for their kids, and now that band has grown. In Pocatello, we played at the Farmer's Market. We played at the Museum of Clean, opened for the Symphonic Band. We played last year for the first time at the Rotunda right before the Symphony Concert, Christmas music. We're going to do that again this year. We played for Silver Sneakers, Picnics, and the Feed the 5,000. We have a lot of fun in our band, and so, but right now, we don't have a place to practice. We're, well, we're practicing at a school, at, I'm sorry, a church facility, and pay a little bit of rent there, and have this storage area. However, it would be nice to have our own space. We would like to have our own program and have to search every year for a place that can provide us a stage and an auditorium area for us to present our own programs. So we became part of the United Seniors Project to be able to join with them in finding a place for us to meet.
Just a note on your founding member, John, was my next-door neighbor for a long time, and I can tell you for a fact, he practices saxophone.
Yeah. He couldn't have found, I mean, what, a guitar? I mean, does he get good?
Yes.
Oh, well, quick complaint.
I was a complaint, I have to stay in the back.
Well, I mean, I guess I got some questions here because I guess I'm...
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Could I finish making the presentation?
Oh, you weren't done?
No. I have just a little bit more.
Well, being a...
Go ahead, yes.
I'm sorry. I was trying to change the stage so that you wouldn't get bored with me.
Please proceed.
I'm sorry. As we presented our vision to other entities, as we are seeking funding, we have received additional support. Dean Otte Way from the ISU College of Business asked if we had a business plan. We replied, "No," that we have a strategic plan that's growing and evolving, and that we use as we move forward, but that's one item that we were lacking. He offered to help, and we have met with people at the college who are helping us to develop this business plan. Because as you know, a business plan is an important... Because as you know, a business plan is an important part of all granting agencies. We had hoped to submit our first grant last April, but our grant writers, our financial representative, and our committee all agreed that we were not ready to take that step. We did not have all our ducks in a row. We hadn't dotted our i's or crossed our t's. So we're working towards an April 2018 submission date. As we continue to move forward with our project, we have enlisted the assistance of a local PR person who will support our efforts at fundraising and develop materials that will introduce and celebrate our facility for the senior community. He also is providing his services pro bono. At present, we are looking at Bonneville School. We feel that this is a facility that we can afford to purchase, renovate, and sustain. We've toured the facility several times. The school district 25 is still using the building, and the district representative has explained the manner in which they have made use of the building and kept it in good repair while it has not, while it has been without young children. Our architect, who is also providing his services pro bono, has been able to estimate what the cost of renovation might be and what adaptations would be needed to accommodate our group. Which brings us to the purpose of our meeting with you today. Our group plans to acquire, renovate, and solicit support for the sustainability of our facility. Our members are in support of this project and are willing to contribute towards all the phases of development of this facility. However, we are not able to gather the total amount of monies needed. Thus, we are seeking grants and funds from local entities to reach this goal. Sustainability is a critical concern for our project. It is one of the major issues that convinced us that we needed to have a shared form of governance with all involved sharing the task of supporting and managing our facility. We feel it is too much responsibility for just one group to bear. We would like to ask you, our Pocatello City Council, to assist us in the sustainability of our facility by ultimately becoming the owners of the building. We do not intend for you to be responsible for all the costs that are associated with maintaining the facility. And we are willing to discuss what this would look like for you and for us as well. Lastly, we would like to also offer our service to the community. We realize that you have many different boards and committees that work with the city. However, there really is not a board that represents the entire senior community and issues relating to that age group. We would be happy to serve as that group to represent all seniors in our community and the many different concerns of this age group. Thank you for your, your attention to our presentation. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Yes, may I proceed?
I, please do, and I am so sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask some quick questions. I, I'm trying to draw the associations here. My council member to the right, Mr. Moore, has the leg up on me as he is a liaison to the Senior Citizen Center. So, uh, bear with me here. About a month ago, we had, uh, Ms. Diane Bilyeu in here looking for money for, or support for a senior citizen community center. Uh, we also presently have a senior citizen center which has a board. So could you give me the lines of association of what's different between you and the senior citizen board? And what, uh, the Diane Bilyeu, uh, group is trying to do and?
Thank you. And that's a very good question, and I'm so glad you asked because I've prepared an answer. Um, when we began forming this group last August 2016, the Senior Activity Center was the first group we approached. Their leadership at that time was pleased to become included and to join in our meetings. We knew that by working together on a shared facility, we would not only be complementing each other's programs and groups, but we would be enriching the lives of the seniors in our respective communities. The Senior Activity Board's president was part of our governance committee. And a representative from the Senior Activity Center went with me to seek support from various entities. We were able to meet with the person in charge of activities and events at the Senior Activity Center and to determine what their needs would be and what they would require in a new, or in a facility. In February, a new board took over leadership of the Senior Activity Center. Their new chairman informed me on February 28th that they would no longer, that we could no longer represent Saint, uh, the Senior Activity Center as a part of our group. We met with the Senior Activity Center Board to explain what we were trying to accomplish and to search for a way that we could still continue to work together towards a new facility. Two members of the Senior Activity Board, um, or the Senior Activity Center attended the tour with us to Twin Falls and Haley. Two members also attended our first meeting of our Room Design and Furnishing Committee. We continued to send correspondence to the Senior Activity Center with the United Seniors materials and information as we progressed. Then at our July meeting, Mavis Bateman, the chairman of the Senior Activity Senior Board, attended and read to us a letter formally withdrawing from the United Senior Project. At that point, they left the meeting. We were all very disappointed and discussed what we should do next. We did extend an invitation to them to continue at least attending our meetings and to stay informed as to what was happening. We also asked them if they wished to continue receiving our printed materials. Thus far, we've had no response. As you can see, we have also decided to continue to move forward on this project that we believe will be a great benefit to the senior community of Pocatello Chubby and also to the surrounding area seniors. As we have toured the properties, we have always kept an eye out as to what might also be beneficial to the Senior Activity Center. We know that they need, uh, an industrial kitchen. We know that they need an inviting dining room. And also, they need other additional space for their programs and activities.
Mrs. Manning, I hate to stop here, but, uh, you've answered my question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
In the, in the time, uh, so it sounds like we got a rift among the senior citizens. And far be it for me to get in the middle of that rift. So, uh, you talked about, uh, Bonneville School.
Yes.
You talked about dollars for renovation. Do you have a number on that?
An initial, um, estimate, which would also, it, it included expanding the dining room. So it was about $600,000.
And the purchase of the building cost?
Um, we're discussing that with the school district.
And an estimate?
I, I hate to kind of say that right now.
Plus or minus 50%?
Plus or minus 50%, uh, explain. It would be less than what they are, probably less than 50% of what they're asking right now.
What are they asking then?
1.2.
Okay, so another $600,000.
I, I hate to commit anybody to something.
Well, I, I mean, I understand that. I'm, unfortunately, we, us with our limitations and budgets and stuff, we have to deal in, in finite numbers. And, and again, so, uh, I, I mean, I appreciate you coming here because I feel like I'm looking at three cheerleaders from high school out here. And so.
We're, we're not asking you though to purchase or renovate the building. We would secure those funds through grants.
But you asked for the city to own the building.
To, ultimately, yes.
So what's the difference? The difference is, what, you buy it and then the city owns it?
We would grant it to you, yes.
And then, then the city maintains it?
Not totally, because that is a huge expense, so.
So what would be the purchase of the city owning the building then?
Uh, we would not have to be the owners of it.
Oh. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, there's a council on aging too, is where they, in all this discussion?
Um, they know about us, and, um, they are housed in their own facility. And, um, they're not a part of our group, however. But we are in communication.
Yes. Have you checked with, uh, any resources with the AARP? Are there livable community programs?
Do you know, we have checked with AARP internationally, um, mainly as a granting source. And, um, I'm not sure that there's a real possibility. We kind of have a difference of opinion between some people in our, on our committee about whether or not there would be funds available through that.
They do have, under the livable community programs that they have, they do have, uh, community challenge grants that might fit into this.
Okay, that is nice.
I, I would suggest that you call the Boise office. So you would be your biggest advocate rather than the National Office.
Okay. We have been in touch with them and we have talked with them. They know what we're doing and they support us wholeheartedly. So, thank you for that information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Sharon. I'm really in favor of an effort, that, the effort that you're doing here. And, uh, I'm really concerned that we not let this go on forever. So I want to lend my personal support to seeing that, uh, this project comes, comes together because, uh, I don't have any neighbors playing instruments, you know, like Gary.
Come on over and I'll play for you.
Well, I can join the band.
But I'm really encouraged by what you've done and additional things since the last time we talked about this, so.
Well, there's more forums, but.
Yeah, and I hope, I hope you all can come together on, on a joined effort. So we'll discuss it further.
Okay. Okay. No other questions? Thank you very much.
I also have a catalog for each of you. If I can give it to you, please.
Okay, thank you.
I might need to sign up for that. What's a tuition, what was that?
$35 a semester.
A semester. Do you have, uh, some elementary English in there?
We have every.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number four is the Animal Shelter Surgery Equipment Donation Disposal. Redd Nix, Animal Services Director, receiving council's direction regarding the possible donation of $15,000 from Confidence Foundation. The donation will be used toward purchasing surgical equipment to spay and neuter animals housed at the shelter.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Redd Nix, Animal Service Director, and?
Danielle Garcia, Shelter Manager.
Um, we're just seeking guidance. We have a commitment of $8,000 to our shelter to purchase, or solely to purchase veterinary equipment for surgical procedures. Um, since the donation was coming in, being ear-tagged for a specific expenditure, I wanted to make sure I read through the ultimate authority on expenditures, which would be y'all. Uh, we were looking to ask if you wanted that on the council agenda or if that's something you would look at? Or since, before I accept the money, or before we accept the money, you get your approval that it's okay to accept the money going towards specifically that sort of equipment? Um, just to give you an idea, we already have a room committed to that. I was asked that previously, if we had a room. Um, it is not my office. I won't have to sit up on a lawn chair. So, um, we do have a separate room committed to that. Uh, the room is already emptied and actually prepared for the majority of that. We already use the room for, uh, medical procedures, not in surgery, but a medical, use it in a medical sense. And the, uh, shift of that room is actually going to a separate room. So we're consolidating a few. Um, just wanted to ask some questions and seek some guidance on, on where you'd like to go with that.
And tell us about how that surgery's going to work.
Surgical procedures will be for animals within the shelter that the city already owns. Um, we, we, uh, to give you a good example of where we're at with that, I have two animals now that I would love to put to sleep, not put to sleep, but to knock down and then perform a surgical procedure on them. However, we have to wait until we, we do that at this point because we're waiting for things like inflammation, temperaments to change, that sort of thing. Um, the ability to, uh, we had a matted dog come in just yesterday. It would have been great that if we could have knocked him out for a few minutes and shaved him, made him more comfortable, and then put him back in the kennel rather than have to move him out to a third party, we could have done it within minutes of him coming in. Um, on top of that, spay or neuters internally would be nice. Um, it would increase or decrease our length of stay. Length of stay being the time the animal comes to the building to the time the animal leaves the building. Um, it would be an operational benefit to us in the sense that we kind of operate as a warehouse. Um, not to say we warehouse animals, but we operate in the sense that an animal comes in, we add value to the animal by producing, uh, spay or neutering, microchipping, and moving forward with that, or any other procedures. Um, I have a three-legged dog. I don't know if you've seen me walking him through here, but, um, we have a few dogs. I don't know if we could do those orthopedic procedures. However, we could do things such as, um, we have one with a cyst that we could remove, um, that sort of thing, shaving matted animals. It would increase our efficiency exponentially, to be, to be quite honest. It would also increase sort of our operational logistics is how we move animals through the process of coming into the shelter and then ultimately adoption.
Who's going to do these procedures? Do you have volunteers?
At the moment, we have a veterinarian that volunteers with us, providing roughly 20 to 30 hours a week, which is a huge benefit. Um, I, I, she's, she's, to be quite honest, to God's end to a degree. And it saves us money, but it also provides better care for our animals. Um, eventually, we would be looking at possibly, we work with, um, all the veterinary hospitals locally. We'd be looking at partnering with them or working with them. We've had a, a soft commitment from one veterinary hospital that said they'd be more than willing to come in and help with things like that.
So in, in moving the animals to a third party, that, we do that? We make that transfer?
Currently, uh, so currently, the way our, our spay and neuter works is, is we have an officer in the morning. We, we send our animals out to the local clinics. We, we lose time with an officer, so my officer's usually clocking around seven. Um, they're usually there at 6:30 working, but they usually, they're usually on the clock at seven. They usually walk into at least three or four calls every morning. They're the ones that actually transport animals out to clinics where they're spayed or neutered and then bring them back throughout the day if they have time. If they don't have time, we have to send a staff member from the shelter. Um, just the logistics of that will be a huge time saver, especially in the summer when we start to run at max capacity for the shelter. And it's not uncommon for Officer Keeney or Officer Hines to come into three or four calls before they even hit the radio. Um, so dispatch tends to load them up starting at about 5 o'clock for us.
Mr. Mayor, what, uh, what's, what's the liability? Do we have an increased liability with having this equipment?
We, we actually already, um, procedure-wise, yes, we, we may have an increased liability, but the veterinarians that we work with would be providing insurance through their veterinary practices and their veterinary services. Um, we currently have a vet practicing medicine in our building. Um, we do not operate with a DEA license through her. Um, it would be a possibility if we did, did secure DEA license through here. That means we would have narcotics in the building outside of our near narcotics that we use for euthanasia and other substances. Um, there's a risk there and a possible liability there, but it's covered through their licensure through the state. I believe for the most part.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, and Redd, if you do keep narcotics on, you have to have the facility to secure them? Is that available at this time or?
We have it.
We do, we, yeah, we, we do keep it drug safe. Um, we, we keep near narcotics on the building and then the premises, and actual narcotics on the premises already. Um, the, this term is for euthanasia is considered a near narcotic. We also do have, um, uh, substances in order to help tranquilize or ease animals. The substances we'd be looking at if we were going to do spay and neuter would probably be something along the TT Dex line of protocol, which would be talazolterbust and Dex dormitor, which are narcotics. Um, if we use our current vet, she would be the one holding the DEA license. However, it would be up to her how she wanted to secure them. She could leave the premises with them if she wanted. If she felt like securing them there, we would provide her a safe.
I mean, what's that gonna provide for you? And then, how are you gonna budget for dressing sutures in the future?
We'll be close. We'll be saving a little bit of money on dressing. I won't lie to you, just having a vet in the building rises my costs up. Just the ability to treat animals increases my length of stay to some degree with some animals, so we get kittens in, we can treat them, we keep them longer. That requires me to clean them more. That takes hours overall. There will be an increase to some degree. Some of it will be offset by what we're already saving by not having to spend money sending them out. I can't guarantee it'll be a one-for-one, to be quite honest. I can, the one thing I can guarantee is the standard of care for the animals will increase. That's unquestionable.
Yeah, absolutely. Well... Mr. Mayor, my feeling would be that we should authorize them to proceed.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, as long as...
I believe that we've already seen this come through on an agenda, and we've approved it. I think that they're interested in more grants and more opportunities, and want to make sure that the council's comfortable with them moving forward with the ability to do this spay and neuter case.
But I think anything they can do to support having a vet in the building doing what she's doing is awesome.
Especially when she's donating what she's doing.
It's nice when it's free. I won't argue with that.
Absolutely, Redd.
Sounds like everybody's felt pretty comfortable with you moving forward with it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Hope you have a good day.
Thank you.
Have you seen the other people in the audience? I don't know how it could be a good day.
So, Council, I have a feeling this next agenda item's gonna take a few minutes. Do we want a little break before we get into this one, or do you want to...
Ten minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Let's take a ten-minute break, and then we'll go. Okay, so we're gonna hold you for another ten minutes. Thank you very much. We'll be right back. Good morning, and thank you for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue with our meeting. Agenda item number five is the billboard moratorium sign code amendments update. Planning and Development Services staff will be present to update the council on proposed amendments to the sign code addressing billboards as well as the other potential changes. Staff will also provide information from a recent informational meeting held with local sign contractors and other concerned parties regarding the proposed amendments. Now, before we get started, I just want to remind everybody that this is the staff talking to the council, and it's not a, it's a business meeting, it is not a audience participation, and so boos and clapping and those things will not be tolerated. However, stares, we can't stop that, so...
Inexplicuous gesture.
Yeah, we don't want any of those either. But this is strictly a business meeting, so the council can understand and know what the staff has been working on, and we've asked them to do so, and so we will see how the meeting proceeds at this point, and we'll go forward. So, thank you for being here, and for showing either your support for or against anything happening, and there will be a public hearing in the future that we will be addressing and allowing people to speak at that time with this as information. So, I will turn this time over to Melanie.
Melanie Giggly, Planning and Development Services.
Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner.
Rich Deal, Legal Department.
Okay. Just very brief background. June 1st, the council adopted Resolution 2017-09, creating a moratorium on the acceptance of billboard applications. This is generally in response to concerns about traffic safety, the protection of residential areas, and the general public's interest, general health and welfare. Then at a study session in August, we came to you and said, okay, we need to get something going on the moratorium. What is your direction? And the general direction was to draft language which would ban billboards, or in our code switched to the off-premise.
Let's clarify that statement a lot, please.
Okay.
Never, at any time, does this council member recall saying, "We're gonna ban all billboards," ever.
Okay. We'll clarify that. To draft language banning the acceptance of any new applications.
Correct, yes.
And to draft language, then, that any new billboards in the future would be disallowed. Okay. Sorry. We'll correct that.
That's a big difference.
It is. We are not looking to take down existing billboards. Okay. Also, at your direction, we had an informational meeting on September 28th, at which we invited the local sign contractors who are licensed in the city of Pocatello. The message went out broader than that as well, which is terrific. We're all interested in hearing what the public has to say. One of the things we did, in addition to the billboard language that we were talking about, is because codifying and, you know, publishing and noticing is fairly expensive, we decide, we, as staff, went ahead with some other potential changes to the ordinance to address a couple different things. One is a recent Supreme Court decision, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, where sign codes must be content neutral. In our code, temporary signs are not treated content neutral right now. Certain kinds are allowed all the time, certain kinds are allowed only for thirty or sixty days. There are size restrictions. If you're one kind of temporary sign, different size restrictions if you're a different kind of temporary sign. That kind of thing would be, that the Supreme Court has said is not permissible. This is a list of some of what we can regulate, and in general, our code, I think, does so in conformance with this decision, with the exception of our temporary signs. So, staff tried, took stab at that, as well as doing some what I would consider mostly housekeeping. We had portable sign information all through the code. We tried to put it in the right spot. We did add an allowance for individual businesses in professional office buildings to have individual wall signs, which right now they do not. They have to come through sign exception, and we've seen lots of them. So, we decided that obviously this code isn't working. This is something we should relax and allow something a little different. So, the proposed changes, proposed direction, billboards would now be listed as prohibited. We did draft some language on how existing billboards might be handled. That's in the draft you have. It's based very closely on other language in this general area, specifically chubby cities. Temporary language, the existing code, as I was saying, it contains separate categories, the individual wall signs, and then the minor changes, that I don't believe would be of any huge interest, but I could be wrong. But those were included in what has gone out to everybody. At the informational meeting, notice was sent out to licensed sign contractors. Thirty-one folks signed in. We were guessing there were a few more than that, but that's who we had a list of. Their key concerns on the temporary signs were that they are too restrictive to allow marketing of real estate for sale or lease. That was the biggest concern on temporary signs that we were hearing. Billboards, the big concerns were in regard to the ban, of course, that it would cause us, one of, their place has too much of a business restriction on sign contractors and business owners. Existing regulations are sufficient. Many who were there commented that they would like to see the city create a review committee to take a look at the issues and see if we could work together to create code language that would be amenable to both sides. There's also several Redd stated that this is probably an issue of code enforcement. I wouldn't deny that. It is difficult at night. Frequently, we don't, you know, staff's not out to see it, so we don't know that it's wrong, and if it's not reported to us, you know, maybe we need to have a night shift. So that's a possibility on the code enforcement. It takes them proactive at night with the brightness. So, we looked into more of what we could try to do to maybe address the concerns we heard. We went, on the temporary signs, we went a little bigger in residential districts, bigger still in residential, commercial, professional districts, and bigger still than in commercial, like industrial, office park, and industrial zoning districts. There are other options that Carl Anderson, who's here and is a new planner for the last couple of weeks, we're delighted to have him, just have to put in that plug, has looked at. There may be, there are ways we could perhaps create an exemption for additional signage for property currently being marketed for sale without running afoul of the Reed v. Gilbert. We could create a separate category of signs by permit. We could say real estate and construction signs have to be permitted, each one, for location, size, placement, just like we do...
So if I sell my house, and my realtor has to come get a permit to put a sign in my yard?
That's just, I didn't say...
I was just asking.
I'm not advocating that. I'm just saying that, you know, we were trying to find potential ways to address it, but potentially.
Okay.
So those were potential options on the temporary signage. On the billboards, and you have some information in your packets that came to you with the original agenda, and then I have handed you some more things. While this wasn't a public comment period, we did tell those at the informational meeting that if they had specific suggestions on what they would say, instead of prohibiting billboards, let's, here are some ideas you could use to create a different kind of code. We got a little bit of that. They're in your packets. One of the ones that popped out a couple times was cap and trade. You can't put up another billboard unless you take one down. With that, you could attach additional restrictions, if you wished, saying, if you take, if you're gonna move a, if you want another electronic billboard, you have to take electronic down. If you want another static, you have to take static. So you couldn't go static to electronic somewhere else. We could, to address some of the concerns that were expressed by special residential areas, expand the radius around which you can't have them, more broadly around residential zoning districts. All of these, again, are just for example. Maybe you could do something along the lines of openly allowing off-premise signs, these are new ones, or new under cap and trade, or something, on certain corridors in the city. One thing that came to mind immediately was perhaps only those roads that are technically, and I would need a definition from ITD or someone, of which roads are connected to the highway system. Fourth, Fifth, Yellowstone, Eretway, which is Highway 30.
Pocatello Creek.
And again, we would have to see what those look like.
As far as what?
Well, as the designation is part of a highway, or it's related to the highway, and that would be a definition. We would have to look at that.
If it's not connected to a highway, why is the Jefferson-Alameda intersection part of an ITD?
I'm not, I'm not saying it isn't. I'm just saying we would need the definition.
It doesn't take much to figure that out. I mean, you got a road superintendent back there, all you got to do is pick up the phone and call him.
And we would...
He'll be able to tell you yes or no, I bet you right now.
And we would put together a definition like that.
I won't ask him to nod, just shake his head no.
That's something we would have to deal with and say, and there's these definitions, how would you want?
And we don't have those guidelines presently.
I do not have them in front of me. This is, this is an evolving presentation.
Well, I understand, but in the previous ordinance, didn't our ordinance code dictate areas that off-premise signs could?
Only by zoning, not by corridor.
It was tied to the zoning district rather than a specific location on a particular street. It's basically, how is that particular area zoned? Is it zoned residential, commercial, professional? Is it zoned commercial, general? That's, so that's tied back to the zoning map. What Melanie's proposing is maybe looking at, and again, this is just a proposal, looking at it tied to specific quarters of travel, rather than to a particular zoning district as it is now.
Okay, I'll reserve my questions for later things.
Some communities have, like, billboard zones, and this would be kind of a form of that. So those were, those were some of the ideas that we came up with in the week and a half or so it's been, since the informational meeting. I can't remember. Can I go back and forth? Yep, yep, that was it. At this point, really, we are looking for direction on how we want to proceed, and we'll try to address questions.
Well, go ahead. I have questions about the previous ordinance.
Okay, so, I have already mentioned this to staff, but I'll mention it to them again. I have real concerns about the other things that have been added in that's beyond the scope of the on-premise or off-premise signs, and so I want to clarify that. That did not come from the council. That was a recommendation from staff in order to address this court ruling that you felt was a concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I still think we need some work on that. I have some problems with some of the things that that meeting sections would do, so I would think it would make sense to just address the off-premise, not existing off-premise, they would be grandfathered in, but only new off-premise signs, and not, not make any changes to that right now, because I know we're kind of on a tighter, you know, we've got the moratorium, and we've got a timeframe, and so rather than dragging it out, that would be my suggestion.
And that is absolutely true. That part, the other parts were not at council's direction. It was just simply, it's been staff's practice for many years, that if we're gonna change the ordinance, let's try to get the other things we know need worked on all at the same time, and we would be happy if that's your direction to forego those. That's...
And, Mayor, that entertains my question of, when do we review this ordinance again? When was this ordinance written and adopted?
Oh, gosh.
Rewritten and re-adopted.
Over...
Like, the existing code, or with the...
No, when was it updated last time? Isn't there a date in the bottom?
Couple of years ago.
Huh?
Couple of years.
Two years ago.
Yeah, we have worked...
And they're just tweaks.
Yeah.
When?
We have changed them over and over again. Originally, this was in 1991. We've probably done something in the last couple of years, is when we went to an allowance for portable signs. It's probably the most recent.
Yeah, that's the most recent. That's about a year ago.
Yeah.
And it took almost a year and a half to come up with that decision.
It's, yes.
So, yeah, because I remember voting on one in recent, recent time.
And I think that it's likely, although my memory is not great...
So you started your statement out by the cost of redoing.
So what we do is, we try to keep the cost, the cost of codifying, you know, it costs us money, so when we know we have ordinance changes coming, we just try to be fiscally prudent and prepare them at once.
But you're right, but what you're saying is, we just essentially finished up redoing, you know, a short term ago.
Yes.
Under the existing ordinance, because we have not adopted this one, was there a maximum number of off-premise signs that would have been allowed under city?
No.
Okay, because I was told by staff, we were, remember, that we were almost, would have almost been to the cap on.
Well, why don't you...
If I may, if I may, Mayor, if I may. What, we don't have a specific number, X number 150. We don't have a number in the code. The way we do it, tying it back to the zoning, is we have a distance requirement between off-premise signs on the same side of the road, and also on a diagonal across the street. So basically, given the fact that we have, the off-premise signs are permitted in certain zones, and only those zones to some degree, or to a degree, and then we have distance requirements. So in essence, you basically, unless you expand those zones, you do eventually get to a finite number.
Yeah.
And so there's no hard and fast. We only have 150 or 125, nothing like that. But by, by, by filling up the zones where those signs are permitted, yes, you eventually get to the position where you would need to get an exemption to have a sign that does not meet the linear distance requirements.
Yeah, and we were close to that.
One thing that has occurred, though, as this morphs very slightly, is, for instance, we, signs used to not be able to be within 250 feet of a government facility. That was successfully removed, so that opened up spaces that didn't used to be available.
When you say signs, are you talking billboards?
Yeah, we're back on just billboards.
I mean, for the sake of clarity, let's refer to it as off-premise signs.
Off-premise, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said, off-premise signs.
Off-premise signs, yes.
Because that's what got us here.
So it did open up, that change did open up some areas to additional signage, additional off-premise signage.
Well, and I appreciate your enthusiasm for modifying the ordinance further than you had direction, but as was stated earlier, when you, when you take that initiative, which we don't want to stymie in all cases, please, please don't give council credit for directions.
I did not. I know that...
It's painful sometimes.
I understand that the communication came across that way, it was not stated that way.
Okay, that's all for right now.
When it comes to safety issues, just delving into this a little bit, I found some adnitory stuff that shows that digital billboards on complex intersections are a safety hazard because you got the movement of a sign, and they're trying to notice. Also, it looks like where schoolchildren would be present, diverting your attention, which a digital billboard will claim a lot more attention by the studies, when you need to be watching kids. Those are some big safety issues I think we need to consider. Because that's, I think first and foremost, we need to have a safety concern about how they may interfere. Then I think there's an aesthetic concern, and I don't know if you've looked at how far something that has a, a lot of light that will be cast into a residential area, 250 feet doesn't seem adequate, so we need to have an appropriate distance. I think that is part of the review there.
Certainly.
So those are just a couple of things I, I see that probably need to be brought out and discussed.
Well, we have a moratorium that ends the end of November, so if we're going to do something before the end of the moratorium, there's not a lot of time to discuss all of the options available, other than the original concept that was originally brought up, that said, no more new billboards.
Right.
I think that's fairly simple.
Right, and while we digest that thought, I'd like to ask legal a question about that. Under the, under the umbrella of a moratorium, we are necessitated to give notice and have a public hearing?
On the moratorium?
No, to, during, to, on the sign moratorium, or is it just a sign ordinance change that we have to have a public hearing on?
It's on the moratorium, basically, the notice was given out for the public hearing in June. The moratorium itself expires by statute on November 30th, because 182 days passed from its enactment. Council does have the option to create an interim ordinance, which can address this. What I'm hearing from council is maybe you want to do that, but yes, the statute do provide for interim ordinance, in essence, to try to address the issue. But that would, for that interim ordinance, or any other action taken regarding the moratorium, yes, there would be public notice, there would be a public hearing, there would be the 15 days under the statute, and all that good stuff.
What is the benefit of an interim ordinance, as opposed to, I mean, does that save some on the cost of, or what would be the reason for doing that?
The interim ordinance, if you chose to go that way, would allow, you could, you could give up to a specific year, as I understand it.
Yeah, as one year.
And up to one year, a specific amount of time. You could adopt something with full intent, then, of revisiting it by X date, and it would give more time for research, for discussion, public discussion, if you are not set on a direction. That would be what I would see.
But we could still just do a normal ordinance, and then still come back and reevaluate it any year anyway.
Oh, absolutely. We are always reevaluating our ordinance.
The only hard and fast deadline this council has regarding is a moratorium will expire on November 30th, because it's 182 days. In the interim of that, you need to take some action, whether it's a regular ordinance or an interim ordinance. You, under an interim ordinance, under the code, it can be extended up to a year, I would suggest you don't go a year, but it, you know, and then basically, there's, and to consider the plan, a new proposal, new ordinance. The reality is, we're sitting here on October 12th, yes, we're, clock is ticking, we're six months, six weeks-ish, you may want to consider an interim ordinance for a short period of time, so in essence, you could have buy-in from, you know, as, and there would be a public hearing. You know, one of the comments, I was unable to attend the informational hearing due to other commitments, but the information I got is that there are some people that are interested, and there's some good ideas out there from the sign contractors. They want, they want to participate, they are stakeholders in this situation. So it might be prudent to engage, enact an interim ordinance, but the question boils down to what does council want it to say, and then engage the stakeholders, and maybe, as Melanie alluded to earlier, have input from both sides, and try to come up something that's more of a, not a compromise, but something that works for everyone, that may not be completely happy with it, but at the same time, they can live with it. Just an idea.
May I direct a question to Rich? Is there any concern whatsoever that we are participating in a limitation of commerce, lack of expansion of commerce, by restricting the number of signs, or restricting billboards, period?
Well, I mean, I guess are you talking in the to-do, or are you just talking specifically? I mean, I could see, in essence, an argument to be made that by, you know, we do not restrict the number of signs, first off. But, yeah, I mean, arguably, yes, you have more signs, you probably have more commerce. And that's just the reality of the world.
If we were to restrict it to the existing number of signs, does that preclude others from getting licenses to put up other billboards?
It would, if you were to restrict it what we have. I mean, and I would point to the city of Chubak as an example, although I'm not sure when it was enacted, but they have not permitted new billboards in the city of Chubak for at least 20 years. And what you have, I mean, it depends on what side of the fence you're on, because if, if you're a new player to the game, yes, you're being restricted, but if you have billboards already up, guess what? It's a, it's a limited resource, therefore, you get to charge presumably, part of business, more of a premium dollar for those limited billboards, because no ones are going in, just like with an in-your-field expertise. Generally, if you have 10,000 homes hit the market that weren't there before, that's an exaggeration, say 100,000, 100 homes hit the market.
We need it.
Understood.
Well, you'll take that right there.
Will that not, will that not drive to some degree the cost or the price for the existing homes? Because there's more competition. So, there's, on both sides of the equation, you know, looking at it from a fiscal standpoint, if you're a current sign owner, yes, you don't have a problem, maybe, with not being out new signs going in, because you have a limited resource, therefore, you can charge more of a premium dollar. Versus if you're a new player to the game, if you're just getting into the business, yes, from that perspective, you're limiting that business.
Okay. In terms of taking where we are right now with the ordinance expiring on the 30th, what if we were to appoint a committee to further investigate this and put it all together in a final situation? That would take a temporary...
And it would probably be best to do it under an interim ordinance, with the specific term of state of that ordinance, it can go up to a year. And, yes, and ultimately, it would come back, you would, essentially, create a committee with some recommendations, presumably staff as well as the other stakeholders, come back to the council, ultimately, it's the council's decision what that ordinance is going to look like. And I guess the question, you know, you're not the only one, I guess, what I would ask council for direction is, what do you, if we're going to go down the road of an interim ordinance, what does council want it to look like? Do you, I mean, are we, you know, I mean, as Councilwoman Addison indicated, you know, she had, I believe, Councilman Orr as well, is, you know, there are some things that were added from staff's perspective to this ordinance change, that we may not want to address, we may want to put those off to the side, just specifically focus on off-premise signs.
Rich, I do believe that the majority of this council has already given direction of what we want to do.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. No, and I understand that, but I guess the question is still, is, is council still inclined to look at a ban of new signs? And that's, that's fine, but if that's where we're at, that's where we're at.
And that's where we wanted, you know, after, because we were also asked to bring this to an informational meeting, inviting some of the stakeholders, and talk it over with them, and then bring it back to you, here's what we're hearing, what's, what's your final direction at this point, or semi-final, however it ends up working?
Well, somehow it got misinterpreted. When I was at the mayoral debate, nobody on the stage, or the dais, knew what our ban was. They were talking like we were going to throw out all the signs and stuff like that. Somehow, it didn't get interpreted very well. And I don't think that's on us, because we, we set a ban for existing billboards, off-premise signs, that was it.
The ban on new...
On new signs, new new signs.
Yes, it was, you're right, the message was not as clearly stated, perhaps, as it should have been.
So, let me, help me understand then, the council, we're only talking billboards, we're not talking...
Off-premise.
The other...
Only off-premise.
We're not talking...
None of the changes that would affect the banners in residential, or the, you know, developer signs, or anything like that, we would leave it in our existing...
We can take those proposed changes completely out.
So you want to remove those proposals out, and we'll focus only on the off-premise signs.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so we want to make sure that those get removed.
I, we will start working on that this afternoon.
And Mayor, I'll make a comment. I felt like our discussion was pretty clear, and our discussion was about no new billboards. And then when I'm watching it on the news a week later, we're eliminating all billboards in Oakdale, my first thought was, that's going to go over well, which apparently hasn't. But our discussion was really clear about new billboards. Do we want to continue to add new billboards in our community, or do we not? And I've talked to a lot of people about this, and there's a lot of people on both sides, but I can also tell you, there's a lot of people that think we have enough billboards in our town. We didn't suggest taking down old billboards, we, we talked about how other communities handle that, we talked about some communities like Chubak that don't have billboards, right? The discussion was pretty clear to me. So in my opinion, we need to go and take this to a council vote, before the moratorium's out, or whatever date we have to do that, and we either have the votes on the council to continue with that, no new billboards, or we don't have the votes, and we move ahead with new billboards. I mean, we've kind of made a mountain out of something that really isn't a mountain. To me, it's a pretty clear choice, we're either going to allow new billboards...
The government's pretty good at that, we usually take something controversial and blow it up into something...
Well, we're not really good at enforcing stuff after we pass a rule, so that's another thing. So, that's where I think we need to be. It needs to be on the agenda, that we continue with our, you know, put it in the ordinance or whatever we do, we're not going to allow new billboards, that's pretty clear, that doesn't say we're tearing down anything or removing anything, it's really clear, and vote on it. And if we, if we don't have votes, then we'll carry on.
We can have that ready for you in your November meetings.
Yeah, I made the comment, I can't tell you what's on the billboard at Yellowstone and Flandreau. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Does the mayor... The mayor's up there. Well, there are issues with billboards, I can tell you, there's one right over here on the railroad tracks, I don't know who owns a billboard, who puts it up there, it's a Budweiser advertisement, and I can tell you that there are a lot of young families in our community that take exception to what it says on the billboard. They're not opposed to beer, they're opposed to the words that are on the billboard.
Really, what's it say?
Well, I'm not going to say it here, but I'm telling you, there's people that are opposed to it.
Really? Where's it at?
At the railroad crossing.
So, is that a content situation? It's the words, you go read it. And while it may not offend you, it offends a lot of younger families that are raised idiots. And it doesn't have to do with the beer, it has to do with the message.
Oh, one word.
Right.
And to answer that comment, yes, there's, that would be bordering on a content issue. There are, as with, you know, it's, it's kind of like the Supreme Court decision that was pornography, I want to know when I see it, but this is kind of a clear, my mind, I would agree, this is kind of a clear cut, but that's, you don't want to, we as municipalities do not want to get in, we don't want to fight the content issue. I don't see very good success in that, for us.
Right. Well, I think, again, I want to make sure that when we, when we vote on this, it's not a emotional knee-jerk reaction, rather than something that's based on what the consensus is.
So you're saying that I can't make a rational decision without emotion?
Did I say that?
Yeah.
No, I did not. I want to make sure that we're not, okay? And I said we.
That was a pretty good intimation, sir.
Well, sit down there and choose to be offended, that's okay.
So, the direction that I'm hearing for staff to proceed is a billboard...
Prohibition from this point forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that what I'm hearing?
New billboard.
No, new.
Maybe put it in there a couple of times. Gigantic.
Is there any, any, is this for a, what did you call it, a temporary ordinance, where you can put a...
All right, yeah, do you, is council looking for interim ordinance, or are you looking for a thumbs up, thumbs down on what's been proposed?
Well, do you, do you, does the council want any input from the sign companies on what this looks like moving into the future?
We would be foolish, in my opinion, not to have input from the sign companies.
Well, public in general, I mean...
Public in general.
I mean, we've heard, we've heard from the sign companies, we've got some of that, but, but again...
Well, the public certainly is welcome to come to a public hearing and state their opinion.
Well, to a public hearing, you're right, this meeting last week was not a public hearing, as far as I understand.
No, it wasn't there to be...
No, but when we discuss an ordinance, they'll be able to come to a public hearing and give their opinion.
And we, and you did, I'm sure you all agree...
Just frustrated with the fact that we gave clear direction...
Everybody sits and listens to you down there, would you listen to someone else for a minute?
Thank you.
So, so I'm, I'm asking, so we can wrap this up, we don't need any arguments and stuff like that. I'm, I'm asking very simply, is it, are we looking to move forward with a full ordinance or a interim ordinance, and putting a group together, or not? I think we're looking at a full ordinance. I think that we would be wise to start our process for revising that ordinance, but I think right now, we're looking at a full ordinance without any drop dead day, like, deadline on it. That was what passed the council, and I think that we need to keep in the context of what was passed. We understand there are new things that have come up that we weren't aware of at that time, there are other considerations, but that should be an, that should be like all our ordinances. There's an ongoing development and evolution, because things change. That's a different issue than a prohibition on new signs.
Right. And I agree, now. Get your consensus, now I got a question, yeah, get your clarification.
For the minutes, Dan, that the ordinance would be a prohibition on all new billboards?
New, off-premise signs.
Off-premise signs.
Okay, thank you.
To borrow a sentence or a sentiment, is it okay if I talk now?
You don't have to be rude.
Go ahead, that's, yes.
There's a certain decorum that I expect to receive from...
I do the same as well. My frustration comes into the fact that clear direction was given, and we're sitting here now discussing things that were not part of that decision.
Because it got blown out of, got taken out of context and elaborated on, okay?
Without direction. There was, there was never a direction to have a community meeting, or to suggest a committee, or an interim ordinance, or anything else. It was a clear direction to put together an ordinance so that we could discuss it, and maybe pass it or not. That was the direction.
Without, without public input, you're going to put together an ordinance?
There...
You have a public hearing, the public can come participate.
There was direction to have a public meeting.
From the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there was direction to have a public meeting, and, and get some input from the public on this situation, from the council, specifically to do that.
Information meeting, yes.
And that, that was there.
I don't remember that, but that's okay, that is okay.
No, that's all right. So, moving forward, let's be clear, moving forward, off-premise sign, an ordinance, we do not want an interim ordinance, we want a, an ordinance, any of the other stuff that we've, that have been brought into this, removed.
Right. That's fine.
Is that right? And then, we will move forward, if public wants to discuss it or something, we have a public hearing that will be happening. And they can come to the public hearing, we don't want the staff to set up a committee, we don't want any of that stuff moving forward.
And if something comes to our attention that we maybe should have considered after all these people have been here, and they want to give us some feedback, we're still going to have our study session clarification meeting with staff, so people can give input, which we can then take into consideration, correct?
Do...
That's at your direction.
Do you want then staff to rearrange this, get this figured out, bring it to our November study session for the November 19th?
No, no, I'm just talking about our clarification meeting.
Prior to the meeting?
That's a public meeting.
Yeah, it is a public meeting. It's not a hearing.
The study session clarification.
Clarification meeting prior to council meeting.
The working lunch?
No, it's a clarification prior to the session of council meeting.
Okay. At your direction, of course.
Which one are you talking about then?
I'm talking about the one that we have after working lunch.
So we have a working lunch next week, you should have a working, we'll have a working lunch, so we'll go over this study session that we've talked about today. Is that the meeting you're talking about?
And we can bring you the draft ordinance in that.
Right, okay. Just wasn't clear what meeting you were talking about.
Sorry.
And we're clear on what we're talking about.
Yes.
Talking about new billboards.
Not existing.
So, council, would you like, staff, after that meeting and after what our thoughts are, would you like the staff to forward the ordinance to the sign companies that are looking at, so that we're prepared to say anything?
I know the interest of the sign companies.
It's going to be on the agenda. I would certainly hope that they're prepared to give their input on what we're discussing, so I would say, yeah.
Okay, so after that meeting, the sign companies, the off-premise sign companies, it would be nice for you to send a draft out to them so that they know what it is and they'll be able to be prepared to make the comments.
Which, of course, we would do as...
At the public hearing.
Yes, we'll set the public hearing and make sure they get notice.
You know, I understand the commerce side of this, but there's also a private side of it. So I would say that the sign companies and everyone that's responded to us should get a notification because there's the balancing that we need to do.
Absolutely. Everybody who has weighed in to this point, I think I've got everybody's emails and/or addresses, and we did, for instance, notify everybody who had signed in at the informational meeting of this meeting, so that everybody was aware.
You can send it to them.
They'll send it to them, we'll send it to anybody who has sent emails that have managed to hit our desk through Ruth or...
And then after it goes out, anybody else that would like to see a copy of that so they could be prepared to send it to them.
We'll get it posted on the website, we can do press releases with Logan.
We just want to make sure that everybody understands that it's a draft until after the public hearing and the council makes a decision.
And you're not, no, not, yes.
Okay. All right then.
Mr. Mayor, because you mentioned the cost of redoing an ordinance. Do you have a number typically?
I can't give you a good number, I'm sorry.
You and I have had discussions about the concerns and the difficulty sometimes getting a letter of appropriateness with Old Town signs. The clarification on that for Old Town sign, is that something that has to be gone through by ordinance?
If we were to no longer require a certificate of appropriateness?
No, I'm just saying, because there seems to be a lack of clarity of how the signs are supposed to look and...
The design guidelines are not codified, so that is not within, I mean, the requirement for them to be approved by HPC is...
And how are you doing getting that cut?
It's ongoing. We work with the HPC consistently to try to make this work out.
The old signage has generally been easy in the past.
Re...
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a direction, we're going to get that out there, we'll be discussing it in the future. Thank you very much.
You'll come to a public hearing sometime in November?
In November. Thank you very much for being here, for attending. With that, we are adjourned.